I can go ahead and call the meeting to order. It's four thirty and this is the regularly scheduled meeting for January the twenty fifth, two thousand twenty one. Ms. McGrew, can you call the roll, please?
Mayor Bill Hastings.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Chris Harris.
Here.
Councilmember Janet Court.
Here.
Councilmember Rory Robertson.
Here.
Councilmember Jennifer Stockdick.
Here.
Councilmember Dusty Teal.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you, ma'am. We'll move on to item number two. Tonight, we are honored to have Pastor Coleman Philly with First Baptist Church who will offer our invocation for us. Following that, we will have Captain Brian Hoytek with the Katy Police Department, who is graciously accepted to lead us in our pledge to the U.S. flag and the Texas flag. Pastor Coleman?
Thank you, Mayor and council members. Let's pray together. Heavenly Father, we come to you right now and we thank you so much for the many blessings you give us. Just another day to have life and make the most of it. I thank you so much for our mayor and council members, who have a love and passion for our city, and I just pray that you would lavish your grace and wisdom on them, Father. Thank you for being so kind to our city in such challenging days, and we pray that you would do the same tonight in our meeting, that you'd be glorified and that we would continue to shine as a great city here at Katy with all the blessings we have. And we pray these things in Jesus Christ's name. Amen.
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 Thank you, Pastor Philly.
Thank you.
Captain Hoytek?
Please all rise for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now for the Texas pledge. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, Captain Hoytek.
Yes, sir.
Item number three, public comments. I would like to remind everybody that you will have three minutes to speak. And under this section, it is on any agenda item that is not on the anybody wishing to participate via teleconference, if you will press star nine, star or nine, raise your hand and Ms. McGrew will let you in. Becky, you're muted.
We have one attendee at this time who has raised their hand and IT will unmute them at this time. Ellen?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am. Please state your name and address.
My name is Ellen Shutz and I live in Dallas, Texas, eight six one four Middle Downs Drive, Dallas, seven five two four three. I'm an attorney in Dallas, Texas, and I've heard about the issues going on with animal control right now. There are no protocols that you actually have in effect. You have somebody there that's running the place that obviously has no experience, that's putting to sleep, or let me just state it the way it is, that's murdering animals before they're even being chipped or checked for chips. You have no adoption protocols in effect. You make no efforts whatsoever to find these animals' homes. You have no adoption protocols in place. And I'd like to know at this point, when you've got videos of what's been going on there, what you guys are doing about correcting these problems for animals that can't speak for themselves.
This is, council is not allowed to expound or answer during public comments. But thank you for your comments.
Seeing no others at this time, Mayor.
All right, we will move on to item number four.
Oh, hold on. We have another raised hand.
Okay.
If IT, if you'll unmute Cindy at this time.
Hello?
Yes, Cindy, if you'll state your name and address.
My name is Cindy Hudson. I live at fifteen fifty Haviden in Katy, Texas. And I know about the recent issues with animal control. What I am here to talk about is to offer my services. Currently, I have a shelter page called Fort Bend County Shelter Animals, and I go out to Fort Bend County Shelter and we do Rosenberg and we video the animals so that people, rescuers and networkers and maybe possible adopters for Katy in the future. But right now, they can see these animals and we can work to get them out. And so I would like to be able to come into Katy Animal Control and video these so we can get them out to the public and hopefully get them out to rescuers at this point.
Cindy, if you'd like to send information to info@cityofkaty.com, you can.
Oh, okay. I know I've sent it to Rory, so I'll forward it to the next person.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am.
We have another raised hand at this time. IT, if you will promote.
I'm sorry, it's Marley. I didn't put my name.
You're good, you're good.
School Zooms.
Marley, if you will state your name and address, please.
Yes, ma'am. Marley McDonald, twenty one seventy four Fort Laramie, Katy, Texas. And I'm also a volunteer. I've been volunteering at Harris County for the last few years. That's how I know Cindy Hudson. And so I would love to volunteer as well. If there's a form, if we could follow the protocols, I would love to give ideas to the shelter. So we could just help network the animals there and that's the whole idea to network and get them with rescues, sign up, have a sign up list and some type of organization and also get some fosters so we can raise donations and, I mean, just work with y'all and collaborate and give, I mean, positive feedback so we can work with y'all and just get the animals out and possibly up north on transport and not have a, you know, a cycle go on. I don't want a cycle of adopting out and maybe get some vetting in there. I don't know. Maybe promoting, you know, some more volunteers to help out. So any kind of ideas we could help y'all with? I mean, that's why we're here. Is there like a timeframe, maybe, that y'all are thinking of to get volunteers in there or no?
Marley, yeah, unfortunately, they're not allowed to respond to any questions or make any comments during the public comment portion, but you're welcome to email info@cityofkaty.com
Okay.
or councilmembers@cityofkaty.com and I can distribute any information at that.
Okay, thank you, Becky.
You're welcome. And we have, IT will promote Courtney so that she can speak at this time. Courtney, you should be able to unmute and state your name and address.
Hi, I'm Courtney. I'm at eighteen oh three Vanderwilt in Katy, Texas. I've also worked with Cindy. I'm an officer as well through another, another area, but
Mayor, if I may, and ma'am, I'm sorry to try to interrupt you, but under, under our council rules, you can only have three people speak on the topic during the public comments. If the council chooses to, the council can suspend the rules, which means you suspend the rules for the totality of this meeting. But in order for there to be more than three, you would need to speakers on one topic, you would have to motion and a second and affirmative vote to suspend the rules.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to suspend the rules for a public comment.
I second that motion.
Sir, if I may, Councilmember Harris, it's not suspending just for a public comment. You're suspending the rules.
Suspend the public comment.
No, suspend the rules. You would like to make the motion. No, sir. No, sir.
Chris, you can't use the word public comments.
You would like to suspend the rules. You're suspending the rules for the whole meeting, not just for the public comments portion, for the whole meeting. When you suspend the rules, it requires you that you suspend the rules for the meeting.
Okay, I'll make the motion to suspend the rules.
Thank you.
I'll second. A motion.
Continue. Is there any discussion on this? Art?
Yes, yes. There's a motion, motion, discussion and a vote.
Okay. My comment is, since this is going to be on the February eighth agenda, that all of these comments be postponed until we are actually discussing the topic. Because then these comments could be made at the time on the item where we have comments on any item on the agenda. So can I, can I make a second motion?
There's a motion on the floor and you want to
Vote on it, yeah.
And you could, you could move to amend, amend the lead motion that's on there. It would take a motion and a second to amend the present motion. If that, if that motion is adopted, then it would be amended. They would take precedence over the current motion.
Okay, so I can make a motion to amend the current motion.
Correct.
Okay, so I would like to amend the current motion to, I guess we need to suspend the rules until, for the February eighth meeting, is that correct?
No, ma'am. No, ma'am. Your motion would be not to suspend the rules.
Okay. So my, I'd like to amend the motion to not suspend the rules.
And I'll second that.
Do we have a motion and a second? Is there any further discussion?
I think, I think it's okay in this, in this case. I doubt we're going to have that many comments just to hear it and, and move on, so.
Yeah, but the only thing is for me, we're suspending it for the whole meeting, all the rules. Isn't that correct, Art?
Yes.
Yeah. I'm up for that.
Let's vote.
Well, I guess it's, yeah, let's vote.
So which one are we voting on?
Well, Chris made the first motion. Should we vote on that?
Let the mayor talk?
No.
Can we let the mayor or Art talk?
If you may, you are, you are voting to suspend, to not to suspend the rules. That's what the first if that fails, then you will be voting to suspend the rules. So this current motion is a vote not to suspend the rules.
Art, can you say that again?
That's true.
I just need clarity, sorry.
The current, the current motion would be, would be to not to suspend the rules, to move ahead with the agenda item on this topic.
Okay, can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
What about the vote for what Chris asked for first?
When you amend the rules, when you amend the rules, then amendment, you vote on the amendment first. Then you vote on the, on the, on the regular rule.
Okay, so the motion on the table now.
Of course, the one time when I have forgot my rulebook in my car, but Art, can you, I thought under the public comments, it specifically said that we, that if there's more than three speakers, council or public comments could allow more comments with
Let me, let me read it to you. The public comment period, the public comment period shall be placed on every agenda item for those appearances not made, not made under subsection four A. That's, that's a, the mayor shall recognize any person in the audience designed to make a brief comment on any matter of interest to the city council pursuant to the rules during the public comment period. A time limit of three minutes shall be imposed upon a comment from the audience. There shall only be three speakers per topic allowed. There shall be no discussion of comments by council members. Such, such comments shall be accepted by the mayor and read into the minutes. And then when you go down to that last section suspension of the rules, which is at the very end of our rules that we've adopted, any, any portion of these rules may be suspended at any time by an affirmative vote of three council members. Such suspensions shall be effective solely for the time of a single meeting and shall terminate upon the adjournment of the, of the meeting.
I, I don't think there's going to be that many people comment, though. I mean, we can, we could unsuspend the rules at any time, so.
And someone's all done, ready to speak. I think they deserve the right to be heard.
I say let's vote on it.
Art, let me ask you. So if any other item on our agenda, though, then the rules are suspended for that also. Is that correct?
If, if you suspend the rules, let me, let me double check because I'm, I'm almost sure that's, that's correct. Let me double check on this. Punctuation shall be, any. No, you, you could, you could, you could not suspend all of them. It's any portion of these rules. Didn't say all of them. Any, any portion of the rules.
Okay. Art, just a comment real quick. Could, could, since this is a mayor's agenda, could close public comments and have it reopened at the very end of the meeting?
No, 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 sir. No, sir. This is, this is, it's the mayor's agenda, but it's, it's the council's, council's procedure that the city council has adopted. And, and they will follow that procedure unless the council decides to do a different procedure.
That way we can get everybody heard and I think we can get through this, this agenda pretty quick. And that way we can get everybody heard. That's, that's all.
Yes, sir. And, and if, if there would have been a vote either for or against either one of those, everyone would have been heard and we'd be on another agenda.
Well, if something comes up where we get sticky, I'll, I'll stick with Dusty and vote to unsuspend the rules, so.
Fair enough.
Okay, the current motion on the floor, as I understand, is to unsuspend, no, to suspend the rules.
No, not to suspend the rules. There was a motion, there was a motion that they wanted to, to not to suspend the rule. There was a motion to suspend the rules. Though that motion was amended to not to take that action. So that's what's, that's the superseding motion. That's the motion that you're voting on.
Okay, so the vote is to unsuspend.
No.
To suspend the rules.
It's not to suspend the rules.
Not.
It's not, the, the motion is not to suspend the rules on this item.
So voting yes means you don't want to suspend them.
Yes, voting, voting yes means you do not suspend the rules.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side? No.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Courtney, are you
No, no, no. Now we need a motion to suspend the rules.
Chris, make your motion again.
Now we're back to Chris's motion.
And, and Councilmember Harris, your motion is to suspend the rules for this item.
For this item?
Yes, okay.
Like I said at the beginning, by the way.
I second that motion.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same side?
Aye.
Motion carries. Courtney?
I'm still here.
Courtney's here again. Sorry for the confusion.
Okay. So what I was going to say, I'm an officer in another, another area and we've taken a lot of dogs to a lot of shelters. So we've worked with this volunteer group that, that would like to come in and she uses discretion. They use discretion. They've, you know, videoed a lot of dogs for us because I love animals. We take them to the shelter and I've followed every one of them out the door. We make sure that they get out into, into volunteer hands, into rescue groups. I don't like to see them euthanized. I understand the need for euthanasia in sick, old animals when it's done properly by protocol. Like I said, I'm an officer. I know there's laws. But they've got to be followed out the door when they're healthy, when there's no reason for euthanasia. So I love this volunteer group that, that comes in and, and tries to network them out into rescue groups. So Cindy's group is wonderful. They, they come in and, and video the animals and they're not requiring any extra work of the shelter. They just, they hand them off into, into rescue groups. So that's all that I wanted to say. It, it doesn't require any extra, really anything extra of the shelter. We're just asking that, that rules be followed by the law and, and that they allow volunteers in. So that, that was all I wanted to say.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Mayor. Seeing no further comments at this time.
Okay, we will move on to item number four, comments from the public on any item on the agenda. If you would like to participate via teleconference, please press R, raise your hand, and you will be invited to speak. When you do, please give your name and your address.
Seeing none at this time.
Okay, we will move on to item number five. This is recognition of Katy High School varsity football team's ninth state championship, which they played on January the sixteenth. We have a proclamation to read and present. And last weekend during the football game, I had already planned and paid for a guided fishing trip and Chris Harris was gracious enough to offer to do this proclamation then. The way it was set up, there was no timeframe available to do that because of the COVID requirements. So I'm going to ask Chris if he would please read that proclamation tonight. Chris?
Thank you very much, Mayor. It's very gracious of you to allow me to still read it. I appreciate that. Proclamation, Katy High School Tigers Varsity Football Team, twenty twenty state champions. Katy Dynasty adds ninth state championship. On behalf of the city of Katy, I, Bill Hastings, Mayor, a great pleasure in congratulating the Katy High School Tigers Varsity Football Team and Coach Gary Joseph as they earned their ninth state title and place in history as the twenty twenty class six A, division two state champions by defeating Cedar Hill Longhorn on January sixteenth, twenty twenty one, at AT&amp;T Stadium in Arlington, Texas. And whereas the Katy Tigers have had many impressive victories throughout the season, believe them towards the end goal, which is a true testament to the entire team's hard work, dedication and spirit. These achievements could not have been reached without the leadership of outstanding coaches and support staff guiding the way to victory and encouragement of the players' parents who together instilled in them the value of teamwork and imparted in them the desire for success and helped them develop a sense of fair play and competition, which all exemplifies the pride and heart of the city of champions. And whereas you are all fine representatives of Katy High School and the city of Katy, it is an honor to join with your families and friends in recognizing and rejoicing in your championship season. And now therefore, as mayor of the city of Katy, I hereby recognize and commend the members and coaches of the twenty twenty Katy High School Varsity Football Team for achieving the standards of merit necessary to bring home another state title. It is a great day to be a Katy Tiger. Witness my hand and the seal of the city of Katy, Texas on this day, sixteenth day of January, twenty twenty one, signed by Mayor Bill Hastings. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. And Coach Joseph or any of you boys on the football team or parents or booster club that may be listening, congratulations, the city of Katy. Very, very proud of you. And we've just got to do it again. Win ten.
I like it.
Love it.
Moving on to item number six, it's the presentation of certificate of achievement for excellence in the financial reporting for comprehensive annual financial plan report for fiscal year ended September thirtieth, two thousand nineteen. And there it is, Andy. Thank you again for all the work and the dedication you put into keeping cities finances so above board and we appreciate you.
Thank you very much. If there is a state championship for small city finance departments, our goal would be to win that also.
Ellen, there is. We just saw proof of that, Andy, so thank you. Item number seven, administrative project update on the downtown plaza. This was requested by councilmember Janet Court and Mayor Pro Tim Harris on December the thirtieth of twenty twenty, continued from the January eleventh, twenty twenty one meeting. And this item is discussion only. At this time, we have Mr. Byron Abear, the city administrator, who will give us a little presentation on it.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. What I do also have is I have the lead engineer on the project, Chris LaBonne's here. We have, we have had some progress, even with the rain. We've had one of the biggest obstacles, and I'll let Chris get into it, but one of the biggest obstacles that we had out there, we finally have it removed. So Chris, you want to go ahead and give an update?
Good evening, council. So we, as Byron did say, we, we got rid of, since our last meeting two weeks ago, we were able to coordinate with Center Point to get the old power pole removed. So that's done and out of the way. Didn't create any issues for us, so we're now free and clear to complete all the work and we won't have to wait for that or hold back for anything. We are actively working with the contractors, both on the hardscape and the landscape project. Last week, they were able to get the footings in for the shade structure behind the civic center. We're hopeful, the weather's supposed to turn for the good, I think. We're supposed to have some, a good stretch here, get things dried out. We'll get our concrete slab poured behind the civic center hopefully this week. And then our landscape contractor should be able to get in there and start doing his final grading of the site. We'll go out there and check it all, make sure everything's good. Then they'll put in irrigation heads and get their sod delivered and they're hoping to get that done. With the good weather, we should be able to get that done either later this week or early next week would be the plan to try to get the sod starting to be installed. So I think still the biggest long lead item is going to be the shade structure behind the civic center, but outside of that, we should see a lot of progress over the next few weeks out there.
Chris, you did pour some concrete, a little bit of the sidewalk and, and the entrance on the, on Third Street. So, you know, I did see the cement truck get back there, so I'm hoping to see it again this week and pour the rest of that slab in the back.
That's correct.
Council?
I went by there last week, end of last week or whatever, noticed that the pole was done and the first thing I did was pick up the phone and call Chris Harris and say, it's gone, it's gone. So that was exciting. All of this sounds great. I'm so happy that this is moving forward and it seems like it's going to be weather.
If the weather holds up, we'll, we'll hopefully get there, right, Chris?
That's the plan and I think mother nature's going to do some good here, starting tomorrow is what I see, so.
Well, good, good. We're ready to get it to where it looks green. Somebody's internet is unstable, is it mine? Um, we're hoping to get, get to a point where it looks green and not like a construction site, so I'm very excited.
Hey Byron, I have a quick question. Did we get that email address set up that we stated we would set up a couple of weeks ago?
Oh, good question.
So when, when we talk about the project and then I wanted to ask Art, things that we discussed the last time, like looking at the bathrooms and the civic center. So they were not action items, but they're information items, correct?
Well, well, if there are actions that, that you can take on your own or under the mayor's guidance, that the council that the council kind of gave consensus, even though there was not a vote on it, but there was consensus, you can move forward on those.
Okay.
If it's, if it's something that, that there was not a consensus on, or it's something that, that you or the mayor do not have independent authority to do, then you need to bring it back to council.
Okay, so a cou- a couple of things we actually brought up. One was, do we have locks on the interior of the civic center where we could maybe open the bathrooms up? We've confirmed that we do not have locks, and we are looking at what kind of locks we could put on those doors. That would then have to maybe come back to be an action item. Once we figure out what kind of locks we could put on, we're looking at magnetic locks, would probably be the easiest. As far as the info, email setup, I'm going to go ahead, I can now go ahead and set that up now that I've talked to Art a little bit about how I can work this project, so we'll go ahead and set that up and and start getting feedback. And then what other things? I figured that, I figured later on, we would come back, once we got this place greened up and spring's coming, we would come back for discussion on purpose. What can we do with, with this project? So I figured at a later, at a later meeting, we would come together and go, okay, it's all green now, it's all set up, it's all programmed, it's ready to go, you know, let's, let's start having some events, and what do those events look like?
One of the things, Byron, are you done?
Yes.
One of the things we had also talked about was maybe trying to, and and this may be a later, later discussion like you just mentioned, is bringing together a different, another advisory board or or somehow coming up with a a plan to look at how we're going to use the plaza in conjunction with the Rylander property and just a vision for the entire area. You know, prob- we're probably talking like a ten, fifteen-year plan type thing for the downtown area. Is that still feasible that we can do?
And, and, you know, once, let's get it activated, let's get it where it needs to be, and then let's, let's start walking down that path.
Okay, okay.
Any further discussion?
Yes, just real quick, I do, I do want to commend Councilmember Court. She's, she's really worked on that. She's, she's given me several updates on it, so I really appreciate that. I had to, had to drive by it and and make comments or anything, so I, I appreciate that from Ms. Court.
Thank you, Chris.
Anybody else? I will move on to item number eight. Proposed amendment to zoning ordinance number six twenty-one for special use permit that allows a special use to wit an institution of religious nature, which is the Crossing Community Church in a M industrial district within nine thousand nine hundred and forty-two square feet of space located at ten sixteen FM fourteen sixty-three. We'll go ahead and open the public hearing at Ms. McGrew, what time is it?
Five oh four PM.
We'll open the public hearing at five oh four PM.
Okay, seeing none at this time.
They will close the public hearing at five oh five. Ms. McGrew, can you read the caption, please, ma'am?
An ordinance of the city council of the city of Katy, Texas, amending the city of Katy zoning ordinance number six two one, establishing a special use permit that allows a special use to wit an institution of a religious nature, Crossing's Community Church in an M industrial district in nine thousand nine hundred and forty-two square feet of space at ten sixteen FM fourteen sixty-three, providing for an effective date, repealing all ordinances and parts of ordinances in conflict herewith, providing for severability, and providing for a fine not to exceed two thousand for each day a violation of this ordinance exists.
Thank you. Ma'am, do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Court, second by Mayor Pro Tim Harris. Any discussion? Having no discussion, we'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number nine. Proposed amendment to zoning ordinance number six twenty-one for a special use permit that allows a special use to wit an institution of a religious nature, the Iglesia Rios de Acete Rivers of Oil Church in a C-two general business district located at five forty-one Pin Oak Road. We'll open the public hearing at five oh seven.
Seeing none, ma'am.
Then we will close it at five oh seven. Ms. McGrew, can you read that caption, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance of the city council of the city of Katy, Texas, amending the city of Katy zoning ordinance number six two one, establishing a special use permit that allows a special use to wit an institution of a religious nature, Iglesia Rios de Acete Rivers of Oil Church in a C-two general business district at five four one Pin Oak Road, providing for an effective date, repealing all ordinances and parts of ordinances in conflict herewith, providing for severability, and providing for a fine not to exceed two thousand dollars for each day a violation of this ordinance exists.
Thank you, ma'am. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion.
Second it.
Motion by Councilmember Thiel, seconded by Jennifer Stockdick. Is there any discussion? No discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number ten. Proposed amendment to zoning ordinance number six twenty-one by amending ordinance number eleven ninety-nine, Katy Mills Plan Development District to allow an institution of religious nature, the Gateway Church, located at two five zero two four Katy Mills Drive. And we will open the public hearing at five oh eight.
Seeing none at this time, ma'am.
Okay, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing at five oh eight. Ms. McGrew, can you read that caption, please, ma'am?
Yes, sir. An ordinance of the city council of the city of Katy, Texas, amending city of Katy ordinance number six two one, the comprehensive zoning ordinance, amending Katy Mills Plan Development District, amending certain requirements and restrictions for development within the Katy Mills Plan Development District, providing a penalty of two thousand dollars for each day a violation of any provision of this ordinance, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith, and providing for severability, and providing an effective date.
Thank you, ma'am. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion.
Second.
Motion made by Councilmember Stockdick, seconded by Councilmember Court. Is there any discussion?
Mayor, I just want to say real quick, very happy that there is going to be a use to this old Toys R Us building, and wish them well, and welcome to Katy.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? All right, we'll go ahead and call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number eleven, proposed amendment to Katy's comprehensive zoning ordinance number six twenty-one by amending the zoning map to change the zoning classification from M, which is industrial, to R-one single-family district for thirty-four point five six two acres of land. The Thomas Cressap survey, A three sixty-nine and B four oh five, of the J. Thompson survey, A three ninety-three and D. A. Connor survey number A one fifty-nine. Fort Ben and Waller Counties, and this is in reference to the Katy Independent School District Outdoor Learning Center. We'll open the public hearing at five eleven.
Seeing none at this time, ma'am.
Okay, we will close it at five eleven. Ms. McGrew, can you read that ordinance, please, ma'am?
Yes, sir. An ordinance for the city council of the city of Katy, Texas, amending the city's comprehensive zoning ordinance by amending the zoning map to zone a thirty-four point five six two acre of land in the Thomas Cressap survey, abstract three six nine and abstract four zero five, and the J. Thompson survey, abstract three nine three, and the D. A. Connor survey, abstract one five nine, in both Fort Ben and Waller Counties as R-one single-family residential, amending the city of Katy's comprehensive plan to conform to the zoning classifications set forth in this ordinance, repealing all ordinances and parts of ordinances in conflict herewith, providing for severability, and providing for a fine not to exceed two thousand dollars for each day a violation of this ordinance exists.
Thank you, ma'am. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Jennifer Stockdick, seconded by Councilmember
Harris.
Is there any discussion?
I just had a, this was the one that I received some questions on from the public. I know I've answered it, but maybe we should decide. This is a great thing. It's a great thing for the Outdoor Learning Center. It's a great thing for the district. I grew up going to the Outdoor Learning Center when I was in elementary school. It's a wonderful, wonderful place. This is an expansion, but I didn't know if an officer, Byron, wanted to give just a little bit of public and back, you know, just explain it a little bit, because there was, like I said, there was a lot of questions and emails that I was fielding about it. Sure. Nash, you want to give a background on it?
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Robertson. So this one, KDSD is expanding their use on their property. Half of their property was zoned industrial, and the other half was single-family residential. In order for them to continue their use, they had to ask you to rezone that property to be all R-one single-family residential, so they can continue with their use. It's not changing the zoning of any property that is not owned by them.
Any further discussion?
Oh, yeah, and now it's just, for other people listening, the residential zoning under our ordinance, that gives them the right to use it for educational purposes.
Correct. Schools are permitted in our R-one single-family district.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else?
I just kind of want to echo what Rory said. I'm thrilled that they're expanding the Outdoor Learning Center. My kids all benefited from it so much. I still have the candles that they made out there under Ray Wolman, who was, ran it for many, many years. So I'm delighted that they are doing this, and I look forward to seeing the end result.
Anyone else? All right, we'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Senator agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Mr. Mayor, both to approve the entire consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion by Council, Mayor Pro Tim Harris, and seconded by Councilmember Court. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number thirteen. Consider a resolution authorizing Mayor to execute an engineering services agreement with ARC Engineers LLC to provide on-call emergencies or engineering services. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion, I believe, by Councilmember Stockdick, and seconded by Councilmember Court. Is there any discussion?
I have a couple of questions. And Byron, I apologize, I didn't think about these earlier. But it, what is the length of this contract? Is it a, yeah, contract is the right word, or is it just a verbal agreement or formal agreement?
No, it's, it's a co- I mean, we, we're having an on-call contract as needed. And I do not believe we have an end date to it. It's just a professional services as needed.
Byron, I can answer, I can help answer that one. It's, the provision in the contract allows us to terminate with a thirty-day notice.
Yeah, normal thirty-day.
Okay. And that was, that was going to be my next question, is if the agreement didn't work out, how could we get out it? So terminate with a thirty-day notice?
Correct.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Having none, we'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Well, I had so many ayes. I think it was Councilmember Thiel made the motion, and Janet, am I correct, you seconded?
No, I think Chris made the vote.
And Janet.
All right, my mistake. Anyway, we'll move on for a, a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. I goofed that one up. Item number fourteen. Consider an ordinance amended section one two point zero five point zero four one, no parking zones to prohibit parking between the east right-of-way and the west right-of-way of Peterson Road from south right-of-way of Highway ninety to the north right-of-way of Interstate ten. Ms. McGrew, can you read the caption, please, ma'am?
Yes, sir. An ordinance amending chapter twelve, traffic and vehicles of the city of Katy Code of Ordinances and amending article twelve point zero five, parking restrictions on specific streets by amending section twelve point zero five point zero four one, no parking zones to prohibit parking between the east right-of-way line and the west right-of-way line of Peterson Road from the south right-of-way line of Highway ninety to the north right-of-way line of Interstate ten, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith, providing for severability, and providing for a penalty not to exceed two hundred dollars for a violation of this ordinance.
Thank you, ma'am. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion.
Second.
Motion was made by Councilmember Thiel, seconded by Councilmember Court. Is there any discussion?
The only discussion is it's greatly needed, and I think everybody would be happy who exits there at Peterson Road.
Until they run over all the signs. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number fifteen, council members' reports. I will go in accordance with my screen, giving Councilmember Stockdick first go.
Sure, I would just like to offer my deepest sympathies and condolences to Cece's family. I also want to thank the community just for your tremendous support for that family during this time. I love how everybody came together to support this family and to pray for them, and it just makes me super proud to be a part of this community, so thanks, everyone, for that.
All right, Councilmember Thiel.
Just a couple of things. Once again, I want to congratulate Katy Tigers for their ninth state championship, and the thing that gets to me about it is that, and I spoke with Coach Joseph about it, and I heard Coach Johnson in the past say, it's not just the players on the field, it's also the players that are there at practice time, but it's also cheerleaders, which I had two daughters as cheerleaders, and I know what they go through, and Bingo Brigade and the band, just the student body and the community as a whole. It's, it's something for us all to be proud of.
Just the student body and the community as a whole. It's something for us all to be proud of, I think. We thank Coach Joseph for helping out with that a little bit. The other thing is, just listening to our discussion earlier, the people that are coming online to volunteer to help out on problems that we have. I think that's a real Katy spirit to do that. They're stepping up to volunteer and not wait till somebody else does something about it. Just want to say I really appreciate that. And that's about it.
All right, sir. Rory Robertson?
Yeah, first I'd like to say congratulations to the Katy Tigers. It's a great accomplishment for Coach Joseph and the boys. They worked the entire Christmas break and the previous summer with sack camp. It's been over a year since his boys have had any type of continued break, so this title was well earned. I'm very proud of all the boys. Also, remember these boys, just to reiterate, they are part of a much larger team, so I'd also like to congratulate the band, drill team, cheer, trainers, videographers, and hopefully not forgetting any groups. This is a great and much larger team that helped win this championship. I would like to mention a more serious topic. Last Thursday, Katy Junior High, to add on to what Councilmember Stockdick said. Last Thursday, Katy Junior High lost an eighth grade student. As a parent of two eighth graders at Katy Junior High and also being a teacher, this tragic loss of a beautiful young lady hit me pretty hard. I am so proud of our community and how so many of you rallied around this family through financial support, the mill train, and in so other many ways. I was asked by Cece's mom to express her greatest appreciation to the city. She also wants each of us to hug our children tightly and talk to them about the seriousness of bullying and mental health. Plus, we know that Cece's gift or organ donation will save many more lives. Just rest in peace, sweet Cece. You will be missed.
Thank you, Rory. Janet?
Well, I also want to congratulate the Tigers on their state title win. I remember years ago, I guess it was around the 1990, and Rory, maybe you were on this team. We hadn't lived in Katy very long and the football team won state and they brought them, there was a parade, came down Avenue D to 10th and around. And so the tradition continues. So congratulations Tigers on their win. Along with KISD, one thing I saw this weekend that made me a little sad, unfortunately, the Katy ISD Livestock Show and Rodeo Committee made the difficult decision to cancel all activities except for the livestock show and auction. So these FFA students worked very hard during the year, taking care of their animals before and after school, including weekends. So if you'd like to help to support these students, you can go to www.katyislifestockshow.org and click on Auction to contribute to or contact a buyer group. There's also another group called the Old Katy Originals that are made up of former FFA students. You can visit their Facebook page or website at www.oldkaytor originals.org. And the Old Katy Originals, they use their donations. Not every student's animal makes it to the live auction. So their focus is making sure that the barn animals are purchased and so that no student is left with an unsold animal. So something to think about. This will be coming up before we know it. Another issue I want to speak to is I want to speak about a Facebook issue. Many residents are not aware that council members, including the mayor, cannot reply to Facebook posts when multiple council members are tagged or have already replied. If we reply, then we have created an illegal deliberation, which is a violation of the Open Meetings Act. Discussions and deliberations that include all council members and the mayor can only happen during official council meetings. The only time multiple members, council members that is, can reply is when sharing or supporting events or activities such as honors, recognitions, food drivers, food drives, and public events like the Rice Festival. I also want to remind residents that just like during public comments, when you send emails to the city, please include your address. And thank you very much.
Thank you, Janet. Chris Harris?
Well, definitely congratulations to the Katy Tigers. It was a really fun and interesting year. And I want to take a moment to thank our city administrator, Mr. Abear. I know he always tells me I don't give him enough credit when things happen, but Mr. Club, we had a little pickup with t-shirt sales and I called him at the last minute and said, and we put them between City Hall and the Plaza to sell t-shirts. And he said, sure enough, no problem. And we did. We had a great turnout of sales. I think we sold 500 in front of City Hall. And if he doesn't, I think he should take credit for the first use of the public green space there in City Hall. And if he doesn't take credit for it, I will. And also, thanks to our city secretary, Ms. McGrew and her staff. Website looks much better. It looks nice. And I did notice there's an app for bid opportunities and the building permits is being published with a tab on there. So that's great for transparency and it's great to be able to get on there and see what opportunities there are to bid. And also, thank you, Jess, Washburn and city staff. They've started a Your Hometown series and I know that the utility building is already on there. And if I missed anyone else, I'm sorry. It's great to see those faces that are helping our city and public. So thank you very much.
All right, my report. First, I'd like to, once again, recognize Tigers. Fantastic here, guys. We look forward to next year. Secondly, we have an employee that is retiring. She's retiring as of January 29th of this year, and that'll be Peggy Dimmick, who is the director over our Social Services Senior Center. And Peggy has spent 19 years with City of Katy. She's done a fantastic job of growing the senior center and that community of seniors way past our expectations. And even during the time of the COVID virus, they have continued. I think the place is more active on Zoom than it was when they met in person. They're doing line dancing, reading, they're traveling the world virtually. They, her and Pat have really led them in so many different directions. They are whooped at the end of the day. But I'd like to congratulate Peggy on her 19 years of dedicated service and for the excellent program that she's provided for the citizens of Katy. Next, moving forward, I think tonight's meeting was a prime example of how the city has kept moving forward through this COVID virus. We've got many things in the works. They're all wonderful. And I'm surprised that none of y'all, in all of your infinite wisdom, don't know what today is. Somebody take a wild guess.
Is it something to do with the flag?
Nope. Today is the 125th anniversary of the City of Katy. Uh huh. Got you. Anyway, with that, I wish everybody a great week ahead, great weekend coming. I will be duck hunting. I will think about every one of you. And if that's everybody, I'm going to call for a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same. Motion carries. And we will adjourn this meeting at 5:30 on the dot. Thank you all.
Bye.
Thank you.
Bye, everyone.